But I wish more people understood what happened outside of like the elected people. It's very easy to say, oh, I feel this way about the mayor. I feel this way about like student council, dangerous and delusional, right? Anyone who runs for mayor of the city of Minneapolis is running to be the mayor of the economic engine of the state. There are interested parties across the state in our local government, right? People who put a lot of money into our politics and send out mailers beyond what you can imagine. Like those people stay the same, no matter who's the mayor. You would, there's a decision point that somebody who wants to run for mayor has to make. Am I gonna try to at least have them be neutral to me if not supportive of me? And if not, how am I gonna actually raise grassroots money and win grassroots support?
We're rolling. We're rolling.
This is a real, real, real thing. Real, 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 real thing.
I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today.
We're in the wedge neighborhood right now, 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 right now.
So there was, there was a political candidate once who told me, uh, we need to start asking people how they've been with sincerity. Like we actually care. And so how, how have you been?
So, uh, my answer to this question, cause this question comes up frequently, especially like your first time in office. My life is a paradox. I, this job is like the most traumatizing, stressful thing I've ever done in my life. And I love it. And so like, I'm doing really good because it's like, I feel like we are fighting the right battles. Even though I feel like I'm losing most of the battles I'm fighting, but it feels like I'm fighting really righteous battles. And so even though it's stressful to be in that situation, it actually, there's like this kind of like, um, energizing thing about just kind of standing firm in your beliefs and doing all that you can within your sphere of influence to, you know, pursue those outcomes.
I, I need Elliot Payne in my life right now because I don't know, I don't know if I feel that way at all.
Yeah, no, I've been listening to your podcast, man. The, it's gonna get better. You'll do, it'll be fine.
This is the Wedge Live Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. Joining me today is Ward One City Council Member in Minneapolis, Elliot Payne. Thank you for being here.
I'm happy to be here. Thank you for inviting me.
So what's, what's going on in Ward One? Is it just, are the politics in Ward One just not as hot as the rest of the city? You don't have an opponent. What, what do people care about? What's going on there?
Uh, I don't have an opponent that I know of yet. I think there's still room for that. So it's really important for me to not get complacent in, you know, going into the DFL convention season and, you know, at least no opponent that I'm aware of for that process, but that doesn't mean an opponent won't come. And I think actually one of the things that's been really stressful for me this year is, there's no way of recreating the intensity of the 2021 election. The, uh, the stakes are the same actually. But the stakes were very like front of mind and it feels like time has allowed a lot of people to kind of go, oh, especially like a day like today, it's 80 degrees out or something like that. This is a beautiful city. The sun is out. Everybody's back out on their bikes. It's kind of like, oh yeah, this is the Minneapolis we know and love. But, um, we still actually haven't fundamentally addressed our issue around police accountability. We're making motions in that direction, but I don't think there's anything that we can point to to say like, you know, pat ourselves on the back, good job done. I'm sure we'll talk about the Minnesota Department of Human Rights Settlement Agreement, but, um, that, that's a really great document on paper, but we're not at the place where we've implemented that document yet. So, um, you know, the politics in, in Ward One are interesting because, you know, I think my election in 2021 is a reflection of some of the changes that have been happening in Ward One. It's such a blended community and I think it used to be kind of simplified as like old Northeast and new Northeast. But there are a lot of different types of, uh, Northeast and Como that exist within the ward. And all of them are kind of happening at the same time. And so, you know, the easiest answer to your question is like, what, what, what's the biggest thing? It's potholes, right?
You have any sinkholes? You got any sinkholes? We, we got a sinkhole here in the wedge.
We don't quite have a sinkhole, but I mean, uh, St. Anthony Parkway, Stinson Parkway, 29th Avenue. The list goes on. Lowry Avenue. I mean, there are people who have car parts flying off. It's, it's bad. And, you know, crews were out just this morning. I was able to snap a nice selfie with some of our Public Works crew as they were filling in some of the potholes on 29th. But, um, you know, it, the, the, the interesting thing about being a Minneapolis City Council Member in 2023 is, the job is still very much about potholes and garbage pickups. But we also have this kind of like settlement agreement, transforming public safety kind of constantly pervasive. But the day to day still is that kind of routine. We have a city to run type of politics.
I have so many years, you're prompting me to have so many follow-up questions. I don't know if I can hold them all in my head. Like, can you quick, quick answer? So I don't lose track of my other follow-up. Like, can you still communicate with Public Works to say, hey, I've got pothole issues here? Or is the Strong Mayor thing getting in the way of that?
I've actually had a really great experience with Public Works and just like really throughout this season. And I, I had those fears actually coming into office and especially with how contentious a lot of the conversations have been between council and the mayor's office and the administration, and particularly like my positionality on council. But, you know, there, there was one of those big snowstorms like right at the beginning of the year. And, you know, it is true. Sometimes you send emails into the void of the administration and it's kind of hard to know what the black box is gonna return for you. But in this instance, it's like Johnson Street just got re redesigned. We have a dedicated, uh, shared use path on the west side of Johnson. And, you know, we have those parking, uh, or the, um, little signal buttons for the pedestrians. And so we have a contractor that plows that sidewalk, that shared use path. But they drive onto the sidewalk, sidewalk and drive off at the corner. And they left a huge pile of snow right at that intersection. And I had a constituent reach out. I sent an email out, forwarded it to, uh, Public Works. And I kind of just send all of my emails just to the Public Works Director and, and, and her deputy. And I just kind of go, well, they've kind of trained us into not digging too deep into the administration and kind of trying to channel council requests via department heads. Which to me, I think isn't the greatest workflow because I can't imagine it's that productive to have, you know, individual constituent emails in the director's inbox all the time. But in any case, later that night, they had a crew out there and they sent me a picture of like, yeah, hey, you're right. We gotta have a conversation with that contractor about making sure they also clear out those, uh, those accessibility ramps. And so, you know, on some of that kind of stuff, we are kind of getting into a, a mode of making sure that we're at least not letting things slip through the crack. Cause I think at the beginning of the term, and maybe this was just being a first time council member and getting your Rolodex kind of really figured out. But, you know, it was always, it was sometimes kind of hard to figure out who should we be reaching out to. Like very early in the term, we were reaching out directly to the foreman. Because actually one of our constituents was like, hey, the last time this happened, the foreman came out and they, they helped me out. And that, they, they were really responsive when we reached out to the foreman. But now it's like, I'm just channeling everything through department heads and kind of, uh, sending some thoughts and prayers with that email. And, you know, sometimes we get them taken care of. Most of the time, I hope.
You need a series of very well-designed email filters in everyone's mailbox.
Yeah. And I'm a, my background is actually in like enterprise software and like designing kind of somewhat complex workflows for like supply chain management. Like I used to like design supply chain management systems for like multinational corporations.
Do you know Mike Norton? Do you know Mike Norton?
I know Mike Norton. Yeah. 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 So I kind of get to City Hall and I'm like, are we seriously like, are, we're just sending emails? This is all we're doing. And I know we have 311 and there's a lot of work around 311. But like, there are a lot of different distinct systems. And again, I'm like kind of an IT nerd about it. So I maybe think about it a little bit too much. But I, I do, there's gotta be a better way than like forwarding an email to the, Director of Department of Public Works and saying, hey, can you look into this? Thanks so much. You guys have been really responsive, you know?
Something you said in your first answer early on was like the, the high stakes of 2021, like the heat of it. And the things I can think of or are the officer minimum, that was a big thing. Whether we would have a Department of Public Safety and who's in charge. And like where we are now, we're, we're hundreds of officers, even below the minimum, we're like years away from getting there. Police budget's still, still high. We have an Office of Community Safety, but because we changed our government structure, the mayor is in charge of that. So like we, we've kind of done some things that seem similar. And the, the staffing issue is still kind of unresolved despite the, the minimum. What did we accomplish in the 2021 election?
I mean, that's a very expansive question. And, you know, there's a lot of ways of approaching, what did we accomplish, right? Like what did we accomplish politically? What did we accomplish operationally? I think a, a drum I will continue to beat or a horse I will continue to beat, however metaphor we want to choose, is, you know, the Strong Mayor ballot amendment was by far more profound than the Department of Public Safety ballot amendment. All of the attention, all of the corporate money was spent on question two. And not much, whether from actually, you know, there was the kind of like, um, I'm trying to remember what was the PAC.
Minneapolis Chamber funded Charter for Change. Yeah. They spent like a quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah, but like it was, it, it paled in comparison to the money spent around the discussion around public safety, both in support of a Department of Public Safety and against it, that, that's where a lot of that money went. There wasn't much real discussion around Strong Mayor. Um, and I think it's proven to be the more profound outcome of the 2021 election, at least from like a governance, big picture perspective. And i- i- it's fascinating too, because, you know, I think you've talked about this quite a lot as, well, the mayor actually introduced an Office of Community Safety, um, you know, right after Amir Locke was killed. I, I, I mean, I kind of had to like, um, go through what my experience was with George Floyd's murder in like rapid time. Like when George Floyd was murdered, I shut down, like I completely shut down for like a full week. I was like in a fugue state of like despair essentially. And slowly I kind of started to realize, wait a minute, I work at City Hall. I might be able to do something about this. Oh, my team has already started this process of exploring alternatives to police. We started that work in 2019. That work wasn't really going anywhere because, and I think you've seen this play out a little bit more publicly. We've seen the dynamic of the coordinator's office and what it looks like when there is a team of people that are truly trying to challenge the status quo within the institution. And how the pressures on teams that do challenge the status quo can really put a work stoppage to their productivity. And we were certainly experiencing that before the murder of George Floyd. And not just in the area of public safety. We had worked on, you know, supplier diversity, procurement processes, supporting small businesses and our, almost our entire portfolio of work would always run into this kind of like skepticism, roadblocks, who are you? What are you doing in my department? Kind of like, and it, 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 not necessarily specifically unique. Anybody who's doing anything that's somewhat disrupting status quo always is going to receive that type of interaction when you're working with status quo actors, um, who not, and I'm not saying that in a bad way. I mean, like literally your job is to complete something via a process and a protocol. So if we're asking questions about a process and protocol, there's like an inherent defensiveness to that. So the loop that I went through when George Floyd was murdered was to just completely shut down and kind of just go like, well, why do I even try to do anything anyway? There's no difference that's gonna come. That was my first reaction. And then it was the realization that I'm on a team that actually has, is positioned to do something. And then it was the realization that outside of my team, there was like this mandate to do something. And that really helped us actually navigate some of those barriers that weren't happening internally. And that culminated in the launch of the BCR, right? Which now we are celebrating. Um, and is kind of one of the, in my opinion, brighter stories in our, our, our public safety narrative here in the city of Minneapolis. When Amir Locke was killed, I shut down too. Um, I, I like, we weren't even sworn in like for 30 days to that point. And the mayor's kind of, not just the mayor, I don't want to just put this on the mayor. The entire energy and narrative around opposition to a Department of Public Safety as a transformative path was, we don't need to transform policing, we need to reform it. We need to change policies and do good governance and the good accountability. And then we're going to get the kind of outcomes that we want to see for our city. And I mean, and the proof positive for that in, in 2021 was the ban on no-knock warrants. And, you know, that was the message from kind of that wing of our, our politics was, we don't need to transform public safety. We don't need to get rid of police, which that's not what the Department of Public Safety would do. We just need to kind of reform it and kind of, you know, mold it and shape it and be more vigilant about it. And the result of that was the killing of Amir Locke in a no-knock warrant, uh, uh, no-knock raid, right? So, you know, I kind of went through that quick loop of, oh, what, what can I do? I feel hopeless and powerless, even though I'm a council member, I felt powerless. And I was like, well, I am a council member. I can introduce an ordinance for a Department of Public Safety. I'm gonna do that right now. So I like came in that weekend. I think the video was released on a Thursday or Friday. And I actually came in that weekend and rewrote the charter and got rid of the staffing minimum and kind of reworked a bunch of structure to create a Department of Public Safety. And I was like, I'm just gonna give notice. We're gonna vote on this. The only path is unanimous and that's fine. Like this is what I can do with, in my power as a council member. And, you know, the conversations I had with the, the mayor and like kind of like in the immediate, the immediacy of that time. Cause I was like calling the city clerk on that Sunday saying, hey, how do I get this? Like, we didn't even know exact, exactly what the right process was to get an item on an agenda at that point. We literally were just sworn in. So I was calling the city clerk on Sunday, like, hey, I want to give notice of introduction. I at least write enough to see what the like, the process was on paper, but like, no, seriously, who do I talk to? How do I structure the document? What do I do? And in talking with the clerk, he was like, talk to the mayor, cause he's thinking about doing this already. And so, you know, I pursued it anyway. I'd like to think that it helped at least be a catalyst for shaping what ultimately became the Office of Community Safety. But this is a really long answer to your original question of what did we accomplish in 2021? We all felt the loss of question two as a very profound loss. I personally felt it as a loss. But we shifted like what the vision of public safety is, even for the kind of like more corporate backed side of our local politics. So, I mean, I, I, I think I don't want to lose sight of that.
I feel like we, I lost a sense of like possibility because this whole, it's, the Strong Mayor thing is putting your eggs all in one basket and counting on one person to have the right priorities. It was supposedly about good government and for me it was the opposite. But, uh, so to go back to your comment about pushing against the status quo and staff in the, in the coordinator's office. I wonder, due to the changes in government structure, has, has it become more difficult for someone in the executive branch, staff in the executive branch, to push against the status quo? Because from the outside, it can appear as though, well, the mayor is in charge. His political interests, uh, are maybe more center, centered for someone who works in the executive branch now because they don't have the protection of like answering to other elected officials. It's really just all on the mayor. Good, good mayor or bad mayor, it's all about that person now. Has it become harder for staff to push against the status quo? Is that a real dynamic?
I think so, yes. Um, that's like the short answer is yes. I think you've known me now enough to know that you don't just get short answers. I think if you, and I think you were following along for the presentation yesterday in committee of the whole around the encampment response. There was a lot of dialogue and I really only asked one question at the beginning. And it was, who's in charge? Who makes this decision? And if you actually followed along with the discussion, that, and that question was never actually answered, right? Like nobody said, the mayor is the ultimate authority of deciding when to clear an encampment. So that decision-making authority is still unclear and diffuse. And I think that's what the actual problem is. And, you know, on the surface, like, I think for people like you or people like me who like really deeply lived through 2021 and the political discourse of 2021, we understood what question one meant as a, like from the perspective of power sharing or power grabbing and whose voice is represented, uh, in local government. But like on paper, it, it, it made sense, right? Like I just, I had a friend who lived here for a long time and he moved back out to San Francisco and he was in town. Um, so I got, was able to hang out with him over the weekend. And I was kind of, and he's like, oh yeah, how, like you're a council member now, holy crap. And I hadn't caught up with him one-on-one in a long time because he moved away like 10 years ago and COVID and, you know, and I'm like trying to like, be like, oh man, this, it's really hard. This like Strong Mayor thing passed. It was this really profound thing. And you liked, when you talk to somebody who's like, a decade removed from Minneapolis politics, and this is a person who's like a deeply engaged person when it comes to politics. Maybe one of those more classic kind of like paying more attention to national politics, but still a deeply engaged thinker on that, on, on this topic. He's just like, oh yeah, that makes sense. It, it's actually kind of weird that the mayor didn't have a lot of authority. Everybody thinks the mayor has authority. So this seems like it just makes sense, right? And so what question one was trying to solve was this like diffuse power within City Hall. Who's in charge? Who's making choices? And I think what we saw yesterday is that like, if that's the problem we were trying to solve, we actually didn't solve it. Like it's still not clear who makes the choice about who, like when we're gonna evict an encampment or not evict an encampment, or put a porter potty in an encampment, or not put a porter potty there. That decision is getting made, but we don't know, like, what does it look like when there isn't consensus? When somebody disagrees with it, does it just roll up to the mayor and the mayor ultimately decides? Or to a delegate of the mayor? Like, it's just like, that, that decision-making authority is not very clear. And as much as people like to drag city council, like, I felt like, I mean, obviously I feel it now in this council, but I felt like it was very like prevalent under the last council. Driving the need for this, or the need, let me put some air quotes for our podcast listeners. It was like, oh, city council's dysfunctional. They don't, or, or like nobody's in charge, 14 bosses. But like you saw them make choices in per, like you could see, you could see a play out on the dais, right? It wasn't a hidden away conversation. If somebody disagreed with it, you heard who disagreed with it and why. Whereas now it's kind of like, I don't know, within that kind of circle diagram of departments and roles within the report that they publish, who, what happens when somebody dissents from the decision? What happens when everybody agrees? How does everybody agree? It, it's just not clear in the way that us making choices on the dais is, although maybe messy, it's transparent and it's clear how that choice was made. A vote was cast. You can count who voted what, and at least there's some clarity around it.
Let's do the light questions I had planned for the start.
Sorry.
No, it's not, it's not you. I think it's maybe just, uh, local politics lately. Because I find it happening that I have light questions planned and we immediately get into, to the very heavy and detailed stuff. Elliot Payne at XOXO dot zone on Mastodon. What is that about? Is that really you?
That's a deep cut.
If people don't know what Mastodon is, it's like, it was really in the news about an alter, as an alternative to Twitter and people were signing up for it and people moved over and I, I am on Mastodon. I don't use it much because Twitter broke the integration that like automatically posted my tweets on Mastodon. So I basically have no presence anymore, but you, some, someone called Elliot Payne at XOXO dot zone followed me and I wondered if it was, uh, really you.
You thought that was gonna be an easy and lighthearted question, didn't you?
Is it not? What did I do?
Well, so, uh, I, I've lived a lot of lives before city council. Uh, I referenced supply chain stuff, like I started off in manufacturing and then like enterprise software. And then I ended up at like digital advertising. And I started in digital advertising like in 2010. And like, I, like, there's like a watermark in digital, like the social media universe for me. That's like about 2012, I want to say, I think, um, that maybe is like the year that like Facebook went public. And the moment that they went public, they really like amped up the advertising. And it used to be this kind of like wholesome place to reconnect with your college friends and see like baby pictures. And then it turned into like the rampant misinformation engine that led to January 6th, right? Like that's the arc. When I was working in digital advertising and like that era, I saw the inevitable end point of what social media was gonna become under an advertising-based model. Whether we talk about, and we'll talk about Twitter, Facebook, Twitter, or anything that's based on advertising. The way they make money is to keep people engaged. The way to keep people engaged is to keep them angry. Like anger is more engaging than joy. Like if you're joy, you're like, you don't actually need to do it anymore. You just feel good and you go off and do your thing. If you're agitated, you gotta get that hate tweet out. You gotta dunk, right? I think that was like generationally, one of the things that was a downfall of even our previous council is, you know, it was always about how council members and the mayor were like dunking on each other. And it just wasn't very productive. And that's no like, that's not like a commentary on individuals involved. It's a commentary of the era. And it was actually very much a response to like the role Trump had in how he came to, to politics via Twitter, right? I saw that stuff happening back in like 2010, 12, 13, 14. And I have been on every, and I was like always an early adopter of like tech. And so I've been on like almost every social media platform that's existed up until like a few years ago. Like I'm talking, I've been on Peach, I've been on LO, um, I've been on app.net. These are all things that don't exist anymore. Nobody's heard of them. Because I was always like, I want to get back to that wholesome version of social media where I'm just like seeing what my friends are up to. That, and it's not like mediated by the interest of advertisers. And XOXO Festival is like this, kind of like a celebration of the indie web, for lack of a better term. So like, uh, I don't remember the first year I went, maybe like 2014 or something like that. And it would have like YouTubers there, podcasters there, really interesting tech people there. Like the year that, um, Gamergate happened, uh, that was like the predecessor of all the crazy like alt-right misinformation that like we still live with today. All of the players that happened in Gamergate were like speakers at XOXO Fest that year. I think Zoe Quinn, um, uh, Anita Sarkisian, like that, that category of folks, like online web creators, kind of just like celebrating what it was when the internet was kind of great and fun. And not like the toxic cesspool that it's become. And so one year they, at the end of the festival, they set up a Mastodon instant XOXO dot zone. And they tried to keep the like community flowing there and it kind of petered out a little bit. But then Twitter, then Twitter was bought by Elon Musk and all of a sudden everybody wanted to join Mastodon. So.
That was a longer answer than I expected to XOXO.
I warned you.
So I was talking to Aisha Chugta yesterday. And on her website, she has a section like making an explicit case for what, uh, this city council election year is all about. It's just the city council on the ballot. And it's basically, she used the word conservative to describe the council majority. Yeah. Uh, and said, this is about flipping the council so that we can do s- some different things. Take the city in a different, different direction. Another thing I'm picking up on, uh, from her and, and probably others is that like, this is about how assertive the council wants to be. I have a tendency to speak about it in terms of, well, the mayor, the mayor is in charge. It's the new government structure. Woe is me. What can we do? And maybe we don't talk enough about how, well, the, the city council is just choosing not to exercise some power. I guess that's my, a long way of asking, like, do you agree with that? What do you see the stakes are for 2023?
So, I mean, it really depends on what your definition of conservative is. Like if you think your def, if the definition of conservative is Republican, So I mean, it really depends on what your definition of conservative is. Like, if you think your def, if the definition of conservative is Republican or, you know, alt-right gamergate, I mean, it's pretty offensive to call anybody on city council conservative, if that's what your definition is, right? Um, if your definition of conservative is uh to conserve the way things are, to keep them the same. I think it's an apt descriptor uh for some of the thought processes and logic of governing of the majority, right? Um, you know, going back to the yesterday's presentation on our encampment response, you have to ask ourselves as like a baseline, how are we doing? Uh, and 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 the way that we're doing, should we continue doing it this way? Um, if the answer to that question is, um, I think we should do it differently. I would say that makes you not conservative because you want to see it change. And if your answer to that question is let's stay on this path. This is the right path. That like in that kind of more expansive abstract concept of conservatism, that's kind of, I think it, I'm not, I don't want to speak for council member Chugta, but that would be how I would interpret that um discussion. And, you know, again, we are on one of some of our first days of like, you know, Minneapolis is a place that has pervasive amnesia. Every single winter, we forget how like harsh winter is here. And we forget how harsh it is because we are still in the like twilight awe of how gorgeous our summers are, right? And we go through this amnesia every single year, year after year of like forgetting how harsh our winters are because our summers are so beautiful. And we are in that phase of forgetting how harsh Minnesota is because the beauty is so apparent right now. And I think if you only focus on the beauty of Minnesota in this kind of like weather metaphor, which I think we can do weather metaphors in Minnesota, it's fine. Um, if you only focus on the beauty of the summer of Minnesota uh, and you don't prepare for the harshness of the winter because you have amnesia about it, maybe you're not going to have appropriate clothing. Maybe you're not going to have that window ice scraper in your car, a jumper cable set in your car. And if you're trying to just preserve how nice it is in summer and you only own shorts, you're gonna be not having a good day come winter, right? Um, and I think that that whole kind of amnesia about how harsh Minex Minnesota can be uh, exists outside of the weather context, right? This is a harsh place to be when you're black. Uh, it's gorgeous place to be when you are not even upper income, when you're just like a middle class person who has been, you know, northeast has a lot of like multi-generationalism to it. So like one of the staffers in my office is a fourth generation Edison graduate. Um, he's growing up, he grew up in the house that his parents grew up in. Um, you know, handed down via generations. Man, life is so good here. Um, and if you are only wanting to preserve what's good at the expense of recognizing what's harsh, it's kind of the same mentality of not buying a parka for winter, right? Cause you just want to be tank tops all day, every day, because that's when everything's great. But the reality is sometimes uh uh, you gotta have a parka, sneak, snow goggles, long johns, uh, thick winter boots to really deal with the harshness here. And that's maybe a metaphor stretched a little too far, but um, we we can't just be solely focused on what makes Minnesota great. We also need to look at its harshness head on and be ready to deal with it.
Let's talk about uh the homeless encampment presentation from yesterday. I, so first, wh- what do you think about what uh the interaction between uh vice, council vice president Palmasano and council member Wansley? Uh, I thought maybe you just let council member Wansley talk. I have also noticed that council member Palmasano has been quick to cut people off when they're saying things that she disagrees with. And I, like, I won't say that I agree with everything. Council member Wansley says all the time, but like it was on topic and like valid to say. And so I don't, I don't understand why that happened. Wha- what do you think about what happened?
I was really wanting to see how council member Wansley connected all of her points. Because it was going somewhere and she was cut off before she was able to finish her point. Um, and I was really disappointed by that. Um, I'm gonna try to create some distant, I mean, this happened literally yesterday. And it's quite sensitive, like racism comes up. We know how sensitive racism is, particularly for our friends and neighbors who are white, like saying racism is like that, like racism is the N word for white people. Right? It's like a really offensive thing to throw around and people are really hurt by that kind of language. Um, I will use a different example from a different era so that we're not personalizing this conversation, because I think this conversation needs to be had. This, the the version of this that I'm gonna talk about is an experience I had while in college. Um, like I said, I used to, I think I said, I was in manufacturing, but I was an engineer. I did engineering as an undergraduate and it's, it's hard. So I can't, I can't say more than it was hard, right? Uh, and the class that I was taking was called deformable body mechanics. Like, that just sounds hard, right? And uh, the the situation was that I struggled in that class because it was hard. And the way that all of these hard classes are is like, you just don't get it and you just have to put in the work. But then some, at some point it clicks and then you get it. And that's exactly what happened to me in this class. So I was like struggling all semester. I almost failed in the midterm. And then by the final, I aced it. Like, I just aced it. I just killed it, right? Cause something clicked. And I understood the concepts. I understood how to put the concepts into practice and you know, oftentimes the big test is like, take the little bits of con uh uh of of concept and put it all together into some sort of like actual real world scenario. And I just, I crushed it. I I think I just, I don't think I got any question wrong on the final. And at the time I worked at a nightclub. I was the door guy at the Quest nightclub downtown, which I think is the piano bar now. If I remember. And it was one of those things where it's like, the TAs are grad students themselves. Like, when they're done with finals, there's, they're just as loose as the undergrads, right? Uh, and I'm working, so I'm just like, at the end of the day, like, I welcome people at the door, I check that they're on the list. Uh, and I see most people come in, but at the end of the night, I have to stand at the like exit and hand out the flyers for the next week. It's just kind of whatever. So you see everybody who comes in and everybody who leaves. Um, I didn't see my TA come in, but I certainly saw him leave because when he left, he was drunk off of his mind. And in that like level of um lack of inhibition, he like runs up to me, he's like, Elliot, what are you doing here? Oh my god. Wow, so crazy to see you here. I had to score your test like five times. I just could not believe you could possibly get that score. What does that have to do with the interaction yesterday? It's ambiguous what that interaction was for me. You know, I just kind of laughed it off at the time, partly just because it was just so abrupt and what the hell, like, how are we talking about my exams at, well, at a nightclub right now? Um, but like, it's only been later where I'm like, god, that's pretty racist, right? Like, you couldn't believe that this black man could possibly, possibly understand deformable body mechanics enough to ace a final exam, right? Like, there, there's a version of that story where this guy's a stone cold racist. He doesn't believe a black man can understand the difficult concepts that are inherent in an engineering program. Um, another version of understanding that interaction is, I struggled throughout that semester. Every assignment, every test up until the final was rough. The test was rough, but I got it, right? Um, and so the pattern of this struggling student who turned it around was something to like celebrate. So there's like a harmless interpretation of that interaction. And then there's a very harmful interpretation of that interaction. And I'm sure it's somewhere in between, right? Like, and I think that's like basically Minneapolis racism in a nutshell. There's like, there's no people in hoods running around with, you know. Yeah, well, actually, we do on occasion see some swastikas and we do on occasion see some um, nooses tied up in miscellaneous places, but um the, the day to day interaction isn't as um forward as that, right? It's they just don't like you that much. Ah, they can't really put their finger on it, but they just don't really like your attitude. They don't really like the way you show up. Yeah, maybe it's just that you're, so I kind of have a nasally voice. Maybe that's an annoying voice, right? Um, and like, we're left to try to like, do all this like mental calculus of like, did he just say what he said and did he mean what he meant? And there's no clarity of that. And I think like yesterday, kind of, I I put that time and distance story in front of us to look at yesterday and go, you know, council member Wansley was making some very valid points. Um, also some very harsh critique of uh the work of staff. And I think, you know, also Minnesota culture, like usually kind of like conflict avoidant, um, you know, sometimes you know, maybe the language of the legis legislative directive didn't set the clearest expectation for staff. And so maybe the answers that they brought were different from the expectation, but you're right, like, but like, I think that like, I think it's a valid thing to say, I expected to see X and I received Y. I'm disappointed in that. Like, I don't think that's disparaging to staff to say that. Um, and I think that was the basis to which um she was interrupted, but like, at the same time, you know, it's a democracy, we're on a a deliberative body. It's four o'clock in the afternoon. A lot of people work well past four. Our really our only job, our only job is to sit in in that chamber and deliberate. The things that we do outside of that, it's a full-time job, but like, I I think really we can afford to sit through for a four hour meeting, that's our job, right? And to gavel somebody out because it's been too long, or you just don't like the cut of their jib. It seems like, yeah, eh, this job is a deliberative job, let's deliberate. Even when it gets messy.
I want, I, like, I welcome uncomfortable moments, someone speaking up. It was entirely substantive. It feels like the whole, the Rainville section of the city council over on the, the right side uh, as I'm watching on TV, it just like is upset when the meetings go on too long and just ha- has places to, they'd rather be. Cause I guess they're confident in the outcome, uh, especially in this new government structure, like the city council's elected and this is the time they have to like do a big part of their job. Part of that is like speaking to the public. You may not want to hear it. But it like, it needs to be said and people need to be able to hear it.
Right.
Yeah. So on the issue of encampments uh themselves. So I like, I like to think Mayor Frye, the administration like wants to do this correct. It's not good for them to do it poorly, to do the job poorly and responding to to homelessness. And so I, I'm trying to think, and Jamal Osmond like articulated how the negative impacts are often felt by working class immigrant communities, like the, the impacts can be things like drug use, uh, like needles laying around, trash, human waste. It's not a nobody wants to live uh around it. Like, I, I understand that entirely. I understand that we want to like respond to it humanely. And I wonder if the, like, the decision tree for the executive branch is yes, if possible, coordinated, well-resourced humane response. But if we can't do that, if you can't manage Plan A, just like make it go away. And I wonder if there, is there a Plan C? And it, can we, can the people who live near encampments like wait for the city to develop a Plan C?
I think the camp, encampments being kind of like first among this, but I a thing that I keep on trying to really emphasize, um, whether it's with people who support me or don't support me is uh, hey, it turns out running a major city is like really hard. Right? Like, it's really hard. Filling potholes is really hard. Uh, I think I just looked up the dashboard for my ward. I think we had four thousand reports just in my ward, right? Like, that's just logistically hard to to do, right? I try to separate out like, hey, it's really hard to do this work from are we doing it the right way? And I think one of the things that's really happened around encampments in particular is it's the hardest thing not our city deals with, that our society deals with. Um, so that's like a baseline that I think should create like a culture of grace around it, right? And I think probably, I'm gonna go ahead and say staff probably wasn't feeling like there was much of a culture of grace based on the way that conversation unfolded yesterday. And I can get into maybe my uh assumptions as to why that might be. But uh oftentimes, I think, like, I'll just say what my intentions are. My intentions are to do as good as we can do, given the realities that we're in, right? And I care really passionately about the, that, this is kind of like my entire orienting principle when it comes to governing. Is when you can take care of the person that is in the like hardest position in our society, you're making it better for the person who's in the best position in our society. And so if we put most of our focus on the hardest issues, we're gonna get a better outcome. Like, if we prioritize the people who are struggling the most, we will like capture almost everybody. Whereas if we prioritize the people who are succeeding the most, we're gonna lose everybody. That's kind of like baseline what my orienting principle is. And so what ends up happening, I feel like, is like, this is just a really hard problem. Anything that we do will never be enough. And I think that our staff, the mayor, other people um, in the community feel defensive sometimes as though when we're saying, hey, this isn't turning out well. We need to do more. They're not hearing our resources are inadequate or our focus and priority is like misdirected. They're hearing you are personally doing a bad job, right? And um, I wish we would have kind of more of this. Again, I don't know if it's grace or some other way of approaching it, but um, yeah. I'm really having a hard time figuring out what what's the best thing to do. Like, I can tell you personally, I spent a lot of time at the Corey encampment. That was kind of like the primary encampment in my ward. And um, uh, it's just hard. You just, you go and you talk to people, like you walk up to a tent, you introduce yourself. Sometimes people are there, sometimes they're not. It's hard to even just like make that first contact, let alone build trust, let alone have somebody actually like believe you when you say, hey, if you pursue this thing that we have, it, it'll work out better for you, right? So like, what ends up happening with our encampment response is uh, it's really hard. Our staff across the board are trying. And the problem is not getting better. That's just the reality of it. And so like, the question isn't like, are you bad at your job and do we need to get rid of you? No. The question is like, what are you trying right now? What's working and what's not? How do we continue to support what's working and how do we um help pivot away from what's not working? And I wish we could get to that level of discourse without it feeling like um people are under attack. Because really, it's just, I'm disappointed in the fact that we're evicting people and I would think that we should have a better approach to it. Not, I think that you're a bad person for evicting people, right? And I think that if we had a more collaborative approach, that was more based on more just like trust and collaboration. Um, we would get closer to that place of, uh, you know, me as the council member, I've spent time at the Corey, that person there, they asked for explicitly actually more police support because they know the individual that is causing some problems for them. Uh, and that person over there actually is struggling really desperately with like severe mental health disorders. And they could use actually like a mental health professional, right? Versus just saying, they're all addicted to drugs, they're trashing up everything, get rid of them all, right? Like, they're, they're like, each person has a unique circumstance. And if we meet them at that level, I feel like we're gonna do better, but I think people get so stuck into this kind of defensive posture of like, I'm telling you, you're doing a bad job, right? And it, they they experience it personally rather than as, this is a really hard challenge, that's really hard to solve. You probably don't have the resources you need to do your job well. How do we get you the resources you need to do that?
I wonder if you think there's anything to the idea that, well, St. Paul does this better? Or is like the scale and character of the problem just different in Minneapolis? Because the comparison is made all the time. I think there was a Star Tribune article about how they do it, how the city of Minneapolis does it, like is it a coordination problem? Is it just too big a problem and we lack the resources? What, what do you think accounts for the difference?
It's probably a little bit of both. It not just It not just both in terms of the scale is different, but both in terms of like, if you spend time at an encampment, you very quickly come to realize that it is about individual people with individual personalities and individual like relationship dynamics. And so, you know, it really can come down to who's the outreach worker and who's the person who's being reached out to? And how well do they gel, right? And so, um, I don't have any like deep insight into like who the people in St. Paul are relative to who the people in Minneapolis are, but like it can't like, this stuff is so high touch and personal that like, it really can come down to that. Um, but also I think for us and our politics, I feel like in St. Paul, they didn't have the murder of George Floyd. In St. Paul, they didn't have to restructure their government. In St. Paul, um, Mayor Carter has a different uh, political capital compared to our mayor. Um, and in St. Paul, they have a relationship with Ramsey County, which is a just different sized county with a different administrative structure, um, with different people, right? Sometimes it's just the people and you know, a lot of what the work has been in the last year that the city is doing is just making the people connections in between the city and the county, right? Let alone like actually getting out into the field and doing work. We have a homeless response team, but it's like two or three grant funded positions. And because they're grant funded positions, uh, you don't get that continuity of like, here goes this person who's really good at making that one-on-one connection and they're going to stick around for the long term. Uh, and be effective at that because of the just structural nature of this grant funded position. And so because it's a grant funded position, there's some churn that happens because there's churn that happens. You lose that kind of institutional knowledge. And so I would have to look deeper into St. Paul to see like, how is, what, what are the dynamics that are at play at the people level? And see if we can replicate some of those things, but then also like the scale is, is, is just different, right?
So you posed a question, this is a government structure question. Uh, you posed a question to the city auditor a few months ago about uh, what he basically seen, what he thought about moving executive branch staff over to the city council, the legislative branch, because uh, the the now executive branch used to have the job of like, and still I think has the job of like ordinance writing, like if council member has an idea, you need, you need to rely on department staff. So is the movement towards creating a real legislative branch happening fast enough? Uh, their city has a lot of employees. Do you just need to grab some from all the people who answer to the mayor now?
No, it's not moving fast enough. A lot of my objection to the work of government structure in 2022 was why are we prioritizing the executive branch? Like the executive branch? Like the charter has established the executive branch and its authority and its power and its staff. Now we need to build up the legislative branch. That's what's new actually in, in question one. Uh, but that's done now. They've, we've, we've finalized the government structure on the executive side. Now it's time to move forward with the legislative side. Um, I feel very strongly that we are woefully understaffed on the legislative side to do our work. I think that even yesterday's update on uh, encampments as a reflection of this, I think Councilmember Chavez made explicit points to this. It's, I think it's kind of hard to, as a staffer, propose content that is disagreeable to the executive that's in charge of your job, right? So when we're asking for data analysis or uh, decision-making processes about the process of uh, managing encampments, um, it, it, there's just like an inherent conflict embedded in the fact that the same staff that are doing it um, are the ones presenting the content. And that's not a disparagement, disparagement of staff in any context ever. If there's going to be that alignment problem, I really, and, and, and I feel like a lot of what we're, how we're operating right now is still um, spiritually weak mayor system, spiritually weak mayor system, because as an example, um, one of the real only like areas of power that the mayor had under the old structure was their recommended budget, right? You know, oversimplifying, but like in charge of police, in charge of the budget, recommending the budget, council approves it. Um, in charge of selecting or proposing department heads, but council approves it, right? Those are kind of like the main areas of power and, and being the sole authority over the police department. That's the old government structure. And I think that there was a lot of deference given to the mayor's recommended budget under the last government structure, because it was like, if you didn't respect his budget or their budget, I should say, if you just kind of bulldozed over the mayor's budget, then the mayor doesn't really have that much authority at all, right? It's completely inverted right now. The mayor has like, i- i- if the mayor doesn't like the way a program is being executed, they have the full authority to get rid of department heads, reshuffle details for people. I mean, within reason, right? There are bargaining agreements across various departments, but um, there's a lot more latitude now to kind of really influence how things unfold. Uh, and now council doesn't really have a lot of influence except for um, amending the budget after the fact. And at that point, you're kind of stealing one from department, from one department or one program to pay for another. I think that like the entire budget function should live on the legislative side. Like it is our responsibility to approve budgets, right? Um, and the mayor's recommendation, should it be an input? We should detail people in the budget office to work on that budget. Their jobs will look essentially the same for that exercise, but the reporting authority should go straight to city council, in my opinion. I think you could see that in uh, intergovernmental relations, like having a shared legislative agenda between the state and local government seems pretty aligned with city council, right? Um, I think that we are still under the kind of like mode and culture of the old system, but we have kind of like stripped away so much from city council that it's kind of really, it's time to rethink, okay? Our role is to legislate and approve budgets. That's like our core, 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 right? Our staffing should reflect that.
One of the thorny things about the budget is, so the city council can deviate as much as they want within what the Board of Estimate and Taxation says. So I guess abolish the Board of Estimate and Taxation?
I, I, I don't know about that political project.
That would, that would get you what you want, though. If you abolish the Board of Estimate and Taxation, like you can do, you can go as far up from what the mayor suggests as you want. The problem now is you're operating within that maximum, which means to change things, you have to cut other things. So.
I'd have to think deeper about that. Um, I think the thing about the Board of Estimate and Taxation is they set the max levy, but it's our ultimately our choice as to whether or not we're willing to go up to that max, right? But like I said, um, essentially the mayor proposes what that max levy should be based on their recommended budget. And you know, whether it's maintaining the current service level or making investments in new programs and the need to like raise revenue to deliver on that. Um, to get rid of the estimate, the Board of Estimate and Taxation, uh, then again, we'd have to again, analyze what is the staffing and expertise needed to really do that work? Um, and I think Board of Estimate and Taxation have had a somewhat of a dialogue this year about how they ought to be staffed and how much budget they should have for professional staff to do the work, right? As an elected body of people that have, you know, diverse backgrounds, not all of them are CPAs, right? Um, so it's something I'd, I'd have to think more deeply about. The thing that I'm much more focused on is making sure that as it is right now, like what do we need to just do the bare minimum of our work? And I think that like we are so woefully understaffed to do the bare minimum of our work. I, I'm like, my attention is focused on that. And once we get that sorted out, I'd be more inclined to kind of be more expansive of other parts of like our governing structure.
Okay. We're, we're going to take a phone call right now from someone who's upset at me for bringing up the Board of Estimate and Taxation 60 minutes in. Caller, you're on the air.
And I feel like uh, everyone's time is being taken up, including all of the people in the audience.
Nice.
Blame the mayor, because he's in charge.
Okay. I still have more questions, Elliot. I don't care. We're doing a 70-minute episode and.
I'm here for it. It's my fault. Let's be real.
You told me a long bar story, a story about XOXO dot zone. It's on you. Uh, tell, tell Aisha that I'm sorry for scolding her about her long answers because.
I will, I will. I'm sure I topped it.
What, what is the thing you wish more people were talking about? Uh, you know, what, what are we just like totally missing?
I think we're seeing this play out and, and okay, this, the bias for this answer is that I started in city hall as a contractor in the coordinators department. I've seen how things play out. And I wish, and I know, I, I understand why this isn't the case, but I wish more people understood what happened outside of like the elected people. It's very easy to say, oh, I feel this way about the mayor. I feel this way about like student council, dangerous and delusional, right? Um, there are um, lots of other people with lots of power and lots of questionable motivations who are not elected and are very persistent and are the way things play out in our politics. And I think that like, actually frankly, on the left, there's a little bit of an over obsession with the mayor because um, there are people, I don't know if it's necessarily directly in his office, right? Like and I, this is a thing I talked about a lot, actually on the campaign trail is anyone who runs for mayor of the city of Minneapolis is running to be the mayor of the economic engine of the state. There are interested parties across the state in our local government, right? And you know, there's lots of wealthy names of people that you can kind of like rattle off, right? I think that we kind of sometimes are missing the dynamics of what's unfolding in our city when we solely kind of personalize it on one individual. And like, maybe this is like selfish too, as an elected person. Hey, don't focus on me. Focus on these like power players, right? But um, I think that I wish we as a, you know, engaged local politics people had a little bit more sophisticated analysis of the interests, uh, not just like within city hall and like the bureaucratic process and motivations and individual people that are party to that, but like, I think you're actually kind of doing a good job of this when you like start highlighting, oh, uh, all of Minneapolis under the other pseudonym of this, under the other pseudonym of that, but it's all the same money. It's all the same people with all the same interests. And I think if we did a better job of saying this individual donor who's wealthy has these interests and they will consistently have these interests, whether they are showing up as all of Minneapolis or showing up as the multifamily housing association or showing up as whatever version of, you know, people who put a lot of money into our politics and send out mailers beyond what you can imagine, like those people stay the same, no matter who's the mayor. And those are the people that like, if you want to run for mayor, you would, there's a decision point that somebody who wants to run for mayor has to make. Am I going to try to at least have them be neutral to me, if not supportive of me? And if not, how am I going to actually raise grassroots money and win grassroots support? To recognize that they're going to be in the race no matter what? And I have a countervailing power center in the people to take that on. If we just focus on, oh, this mayor does this or that, and I don't like the way he wears his suit or whatever, which is kind of like the level of critique he gets sometimes, so let's be real. Um, I think you're, you're being distracted by that. And I think that we would have a much more robust and mature local politics if we could kind of get beyond the individual who happens to be running and have more focus on the money. But I kind of recognize the inherent challenge and complexity of that. Um, at the end of the day, it is an individual whose name is on the ballot that you're voting for, and that's the decision point that you have to have. So I don't know how to balance that, but that's just something that I wish that we had more of in our, our local politics.
Okay. I'm going to shoehorn a Bryant Avenue question in here at the end.
Let's do it.
So who, who has control over our streets? Is it still the city council? I thought there was an ordinance that said, uh, city council has a control of street layouts, but with this Bryant Avenue thing, a layout that was approved in 21 by the council, a week before construction starts just has a different layout. The answer that Aisha uh, council member Chuck Tai gave me yesterday was basically if we had a more assertive city council, this would not happen. Is that the truth?
Yes. I was, okay. I was just going to say like, we are in this really passive stage of this body right now in that we're waiting for attorneys to tell us what we can and can't do. Um, what we can and can't do is predicated on our votes. Uh, we can vote for anything. We can bring anything to the body. The attorneys can tell us, we can't do it. We can vote on it and it can be sorted out in the courts, right? Like there's like a, there's like this, like, I don't know what it is. There's like this like reflexivity to how we do governance and it's very dependent on kind of like the gatekeeping of staff. Um, and, and I've been thinking about this a lot and I think part of that is a feature, not a bug, right? Like if you have a constituent that's calling you and saying, I want this to happen right now, or I don't want that to happen. Um, there's a lot of a drive in just kind of like local office of like being a people pleaser. Um, I hope I have demonstrated that like I, I vote my values and if it pleases people, I'm really happy by that and that makes me feel good. And if it doesn't please people, I'm disappointed by that, but that's what this is. And I, I've tried to run that way and I, and I feel like I was very like clear in that when I, when I campaigned. And so I govern that way because I think I was clear about that. Um, but like I only, I'm only speaking for myself and I'm more kind of like making observations of like, maybe like our national politics, but you know, the pressure is to like, be agreeable with your constituents. That's like the pressure, right? Versus, you know, and, and I was like a strong supporter of question two. That was not a very popular thing for me to do, but I did it anyway. And I actually was very confused by the election outcome of 21. I tied my election so tightly to the Department of Public Safety as an outcome, because I believed so profoundly in the work I was doing around the behavioral crisis response. I prepared myself to either uh, win and question to pass or lose and question to fail. I wasn't prepared to like win and have question to fail. Like that was like a very confusing outcome for me. Um, but like, I say all that just to say that like, let's vote our values and get to seven or get to nine, depending on like where the mayor's veto threat lies on that issue. And um, let the chips fall where they fall, right? And so we are very deferential to our city attorneys because it's kind of scary when you get into like these very legal discussions. And if you don't have a legal background, um, it can be very intimidating. But it's kind of like, you're not elected to be a lawyer. You're elected to um, be a voice of principle and value and to listen to your community and be able to reflect their principles and values, especially when they align with yours, but even when they don't align with yours, to at least acknowledge it and try to like to, to weigh those differences and come to like the body with a clear vision on what you want to accomplish. Uh, and your votes should reflect that. And so if we have the votes, we should take the vote. Right? And even if we don't have the votes, we should take the vote so that everybody knows where we stand on these issues. And we shouldn't just let, whether it's an attorney or a department head or any other individual within the institution, just say, you can't do that. Because that's kind of how we've been functioning, at least like the majority of the council, when it comes to decision-making is there's like a lot of deference to staff. And I think there's some respect there, right? Like I think there's like a lot of respect for staff and especially when you have somebody like council member Goodman, who's been around long enough to have like really seen how people have grown into their positions, probably from the start of their careers to now, like that's a very different understanding of like the expertise that that person brings. And it's like admittedly like, I don't know the varying degrees of expertise and the varying degrees of motivation and politics that somebody brings to me. And so I just have to go with my gut on some things and where my community is on some things. And we should like really vote those values regardless of what staff is saying sometimes. That's kind of what our job is there to do. Um, and we should definitely use staff as an input into shaping our vote, but it shouldn't be driving our vote. So that's a long story of saying, way of saying, I think we should uh, be in charge of streets.
It's true. You should be, and I'm very disappointed with the outcome on Bryant Avenue. Oh, oh, yeah, I'm not going to get into it. I think what Lisa Goodman has learned over many decades is that you agree with and respect staff uh, so long as they agree with you.
That's another way of saying it, yeah.
Come to the end, it's time for recommendation. I see you didn't give a long answer to that one.
Mm-hmm.
I, I noticed Jeremiah Ellison and Lisa Goodman are very friendly. Do you also get along with Lisa Goodman?
I do, I do. Yeah, yeah. Lisa Goodman's very endearing.
I've taken some heat from Jason Garcia, Jason Garcia, if you're listening, for saying that I find Lisa Goodman to be a compelling personality, which I didn't think was that affectionate of me to say, but she's fun to watch.
Yeah. I mean, like the thing I respect most about Lisa Goodman is um, she, I feel like she votes her values. And if you don't like it, that's fine. You know what I mean? Like, and if you don't like it, vote her out. And she's demonstrated that you're not going to do that. That's fine, you know what I mean? Like, and if you don't like it, vote her out. And she's demonstrated that you're not gonna do that.
There is an authenticity to to some of her uh. The what she says. She gets very animated sometimes and it's it is real. And we let Lisa Goodman go on and on when when she is unhappy about something. I think maybe we should tolerate that from Councilmember Wonsley as well. Uh but here here we go. We're at the end, uh seventy seventy two minutes in. Do you have anything to recommend? Uh something you're enjoying, what's bringing you happiness?
Okay, this is the only question I prepared for today. Uh, okay, so I I don't do TV or movies, um generally speaking. And but I do video games, so I'll I'll uh that's what it was last time we did, we met. I'll do it again this time. Uh one I'm gonna highlight is Super liminal. Uh I beat this game a few years ago, I want to say, but my wife just recently played it. Uh if you don't know what it is, it's like a uh first person perspective puzzle game. And I'm highlighting this one because it's just a really great game, so you should play it. That's what this segment's about, is things you should go do. Uh but I she made this comment in the middle of it that was like. Really resonated with me and like the whole thing about the game is it like, it twists perspectives around in a way that makes you question reality. Um and you know, like, not your reality, you know, it's a video game, but it's like, it presents to you like a three D room and you have like some like. Little kids block on a table and there's like a door that's like above you. And the way that you solve the puzzle is you pick the block up until it's like all the way in your face. And then it turns into a giant block because of that perspective. And when you drop it, it's now a big block and you like jump out of the room. And it's just like a demonstration of the fact that like. Everybody thinks that the way the world is is based on like physics and like hard facts about the world, but really it's just like. Just like a video game, like the reality is dependent on who wanted to design the rules, right? And like our job as legislators is to design the rules by which reality unfolds in. And that's kind of a hubristic thing to say, but I I I'm just saying, let's not forget that like. Encampments happen because of policy choices, not necessarily policy choices that happened in twenty twenty three or twenty twenty. But policy choices that happened over generations, right? And we could make different policy choices and it there's something that's really great about having like. A lived experience in a game like Super liminal to remind you of the fact that like. These are not hard and fast rules that we're living under. These rules can be changed and they can be changed with seven votes, right? So that's one recommendation. Uh and then the other recommendation, just because it's a really great game that I just came on to is um. Uh In scripted, which is like a rogue like card builder game, and I can't really define it that well. Other than that, but like I have a um I have a Steam Deck. It's like this mobile. Uh game console and it's just like a really fun game to play. I'm not gonna spoil, it's not like a really like narrative driven game, but there's like some fourth wall breaking. Elements to it and there's like kind of building on this, like there is a designer who built this game. Uh and the game and its narrative kind of explores that meta piece of like. The designer who built the game mechanics in a way that makes the game play out the way it does. And it even gives you these opportunities to change the dynamics of the cards that you're building. To create different like outcomes and strengths and weaknesses in your hand, right? And it's kind of like, again. This is just a fun game to play. You should go play it. This is my recommendation. Go play inscription. It's a fun game. But it's another one of those games where it's like, oh, uh, somebody made intentional choices to turn into these outcomes. And uh that's kind of what our jobs are as legislators, so. If you're if you're if you're a politics nerd, it's a fun game to explore from that perspective.
I've been playing Monster Train. Are you familiar with Monster Train? It is also a card, a deck builder, like card game. It looks terrible, like the the image. I find this with a lot of games that I like lately is like the the image of the game when you're like looking at it on your Xbox or something like. That game looks terrible. I would never like that. And then because I'm subscribed to Game Pass, I play like, wow, this this game is really good.
The mechanics are strong.
And I'm not really into those kind of games. I tried Slay the Spire and I could never get very good at it, but I'm very uh. Taken by this Monster Train game.
Uh well, the the genre is not one that like I'm like, I wasn't like a Magic the Gathering, like I'm not a card builder person, but just. This game happens to be really good.
And I have feedback on last, was it last year that we did the video game recommendation? Elden Ring?
Did you beat it?
I bought it, but I I think I'm I quit playing it and I had plans to come back to it. Which is very difficult in a way that I think maybe I'll start playing it again at some point, or maybe I just bought it for uh. And wasted my money. I don't know.
You and me both, friend. You and me both.
Okay, this might be the longest episode ever.
You're welcome.
Word one, Councilmember Elliot Payne. Thank you for being here and good luck in your reelection.
Thank you. Thanks so much. And we'll see you out there on the campaign trail.
Uh this has been the Wedge Life Podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards. Thank you for listening.